Call this meeting in order, I'll raise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, before you look at the agenda, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things here. We had a couple of public hearings that we just wanted to specifically cancel, but however, we will be reposting those as per the request of the applicant. The applicant is considering other options in regards to layout and design, so they wanted to take that into consideration before they submit a final application. So, all other items as noted on the agenda here were proposed to cancel with the exception of the conditional use permit. We're just asking that we postpone that till next month. So, again, no action of the council, we're just postponing that till next month.
Question, Mike?
Yep.
There are regulatory or statutory time limits? Do those get extended as well then?
Yes, we have a written request from them, signed, sealed, and delivered, that we now get additional 60 days from Wednesday, I think it was, when it arrived.
Thank you.
Yep.
Someone noted. Can I get approval of the agenda then?
Come on over.
Can I get a second?
Second.
No favors here, aye?
Aye.
Pools, motion carried, three, open, four. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for the city? Consent agenda, approval of minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, begin motion to approve.
Come on.
Take a second?
Second.
No favors here, aye?
Aye.
Pools, motion carried, presentation, for Greta, Minnesota State High School vault champion. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The city of Melrose is very proud of you. It's quite a feat to do that gymnastics and how tough gymnastics is in the state of Minnesota. You've accomplished that second time now. I see that also you were West Central All-Conference gymnast, West Central Conference All-Round Champion, 2018 Section All-Round Vault and Floor Champion, the 2018 Class A Vault Champion. You also were in 2016, 2017, you were sixth place. Wow, that's quite a lot. You still have one more year left to do this, huh? Well, we just wanted to give you a little token of our appreciation, because you have done something that's pretty amazing. So, we're just wondering if we could get a picture taken with you with our council, if that's okay.
Versus us getting a picture with you.
So, I was just wondering if you could come up and take a picture with us all.
Can we slide your chairs to the...
I'm gonna take one too.
Just wanted to give you this.
Thank you.
Nope, your head. Squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in. This is getting familiar. There you go. Hey, Greta.
Thanks, Greta, for letting us take your picture.
Oh, I'm sort of reading the paper. And we will make you stable. But thank you, really. Very much. Onto reports. For the Waste Management Report.
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Dan Banky, District Manager with Waste Management, and I want to thank the council for having me here tonight and having the six o'clock meeting. Usually those are at seven or later, so this will make my day a little bit shorter. I came here to talk about the compost program that is happening. We set up post cards, we've gotten, oh boy, what was it, about 90 back that people that didn't want the container. And we're gonna start delivering those probably next Wednesday, and just wanted to see what you have for questions.
Also, as I was already away, I know a lot of people, obviously, during the fall of the year, you have 15-foot bags of leaves.
Yep.
And people are fairly used to setting those bags out by the curb. Is that gonna change?
No, no, that won't change. We would like, you know, during the summer months, if, you know, here's another thing that we know that happens, people bag their leaves and then sometimes they put it around their house for insulation, and, you know, we get those in the spring. The whole purpose of the cart and to go away from the bags and use the compostable bags is the fact that we cut open all those bags on the street and then we throw them in the garbage container. If the garbage guy has already gone by, say we have a windy day, the container blows over and then the bags blow out. So, this will help us get rid of those bags, the container. I handed out a picture there, that the container comes up to here on me. You can see that I'm camera shy, that's why I close my eyes. But, it's a 96-gallon container, and we want everybody to be using that container as much as possible so that when our truck comes to pick it up, it's like the automated trucks that pick up the trash and recycling in the city now. We were having three guys go around in town and do that before, so we're trying to save a little bit of money on labor. We're also looking at the safety aspects of things, because some of the, I know there's some people that use 55-gallon plastic barrels, and those full of grass clippings are extremely heavy, that's why you need two guys. And those barrels will not work for us to dump with our truck, because they'll slide through it and then it's in the load, and we can't get it out until we dump, obviously. So, you know, container comes, there's no charge to anybody, it's just the same program, and, you know, if there's an issue, we'll address that with that particular individual and coach them through it, but I don't see any problems. I mean, as long as they put out, whatever they put out will be gone.
So, the letter you sent out said that this was a mandatory program. Now, from what I'm understanding, you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, 90 people said they didn't want to do it, you're saying that if whatever gets put out will get taken away. This sounds like a voluntary program.
However, they have to use a cart if they're gonna participate in the yard waste program. So, if they put things out and they don't have a container, we'll address that with that individual and say, "We'd like you to have a container so that we can put your material in the compost," or your material in the cart, so when we get there to service it, we can do it properly. Because this material now has to go up over the top of the truck instead of into the back of the truck.
So, a garbage bag is not a container?
It is a container. It's in a bag, but it's not in a container. And we need that container for safety reasons to dump the material.
Okay, except I'm still not clear. Is a garbage bag, if I set my garbage bag on the curb, what's gonna happen to it?
And you don't have a cart?
Well, I've got a cart, but I'm gonna have five bags beside the cart.
Okay, if you have that, then it'll all be gone. The bag will be in your garbage container, but the bag, that's fine, you can have the bag by the cart, but we're not gonna just pick up bags without a person having a container.
So, you're still gonna have an extra guy that's gonna take the bag?
No, the driver will do that.
The driver, whatever. But, you're gonna take the five bags, you're gonna dump the main yard container, and then you're gonna go get the garbage bags and have to give them to the...
Yeah.
So, even if a person has...
X amount. It'll be gone.
Yep.
One thing I tried to explain to a couple people is they have barrels, and they're like, "I can't afford to buy garbage bags. What am I supposed to do then?"
Right. Well, the, this container, if they have a barrel, are they fitting everything into the barrel?
No, plenty of people have like five or six of them.
Okay, well, if they need more than one, I mean, for the leaves, if we're talking, let's, first of all, let's make it clear that the reason that we want everybody to have a cart for the yard waste program is for grass clippings, because they're the heavy item, all right? The leaves are not really that big of an issue. If you have bags, you know, we can dump the bags, one guy can pick those up easily. It's just the bags with grass clippings in it not having a container, there's no way we're gonna be able to get all those into the truck without having a cart, one of our carts.
So, as long as the cart is there, whether that's a 30-gallon drum, a 50-gallon drum, and a bag along with your cart, it'll all be gone?
Well, the 55-gallon drum, one guy cannot lift that. That's why we want people to dump it into this container. I mean, on an average, a lot in town, this is more than enough room for grass clippings. And, you know, if most people, you know, I don't know how many times people mow their, or break their leaves, but where I live, all the leaves don't fall off the tree on the same day. So, there's multiple times that that has to be done. So, you put what you can in the container, put the bags beside it, the next week we come by, we do it again, you know, and then it's over with.
And maybe I'm bucking this, because I'm the exception to the rule, and so are my neighbors, we have a little bit bigger lots, but it's nothing to fill six, seven, 30...
I have no problem giving people extra containers.
It's nothing to fill six or seven 33-gallon garbage bags or containers.
Three of those 33-gallon containers will fit in one of these.
So, you're gonna give me four of those? I don't want four of them, but that's what it would take.
Yep. But if you have them in a 33-gallon container, we can actually pick that up and dump it into this container.
So, what you're saying is that the only thing that's getting excluded is the 50-gallon drum?
For the, yes, yep. But, most people won't need any more than what that container is. And if anybody needs another one, all you gotta do is call them, they'll let me bring you one.
I'm willing to give it a try as long as I don't get a lot of negative feedback.
Yep.
So, I guess it's gonna be a trial, see what the people think.
Okay, well, like I said, we'll be starting to deliver next Wednesday.
Do they have to respond back?
Yep.
It was an opt-out scenario.
It was an opt-out scenario.
Okay, so if you sent that form back in, that means you didn't want it, right?
Correct.
Okay. And are you gonna, are you gonna maybe follow up with those customers who opted? Maybe they didn't understand that?
You know, if, yes, to answer that question, because if they have yard waste out and they don't have a container, we have their contact information on their account, we'll follow up with them and explain, you know, what's going on here, what, you know, what the process is.
And I don't think that would be the worst idea, to have an additional mailing board explaining it much more thoroughly as you have now. The first mailer that went out was, I'm sorry, just not clear on what it was. It said it was mandatory, it said it was because of state statute, it said that you have to do this, and it did not explain it, that you've explained to us tonight. So, I would urge you to send it out to the residents, another mailing that lays out the questions that we've asked here tonight.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Can I get a little bit? Good to see you.
Okay, very much. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Victor.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Melrose Area School District Community Ed?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So, I didn't bring pictures, I just apologize for front. Probably didn't need them. So,
I'd like to start by thanking the city of Melrose and the Park Board for the longstanding donation. Probably a lot of people here don't know, they have contributed $9,250 to Community of Summer Rec for the last 17 years. And I actually have only been working in the district for 14, so I think Patty or someone dug around to find out when that donation started. And I'm not really sure how it originated, I don't know if anybody here does know. So, anyway, somehow we were given the money, and each year I just ask and imagine who cares. So, thank you very much. I wanna say that this donation has really given Summer Rec the opportunity to keep our programs affordable for families. I would say that's the biggest thing it's done. Some examples are, we have like a little guy baseball and T-ball program, and for as long as I can remember, it's been $15 a year, and $6 of that goes to a teacher. And so, we've been charging the same amount. 10 years ago, we charged $35 for swim lessons. This year, last year, we charged $39. We've switched to a different curriculum, where now instead of 10 to eight students to one teacher, we have three students to one teacher. So, we've vastly improved what we're offering. And even with the rise of minimum wage and the cost increases for me to have certified staff for swimming, I have to have water safety instructors. For the pool, I have to have certified lifeguards. They all spend money to become certified, and so I pay them a little bit more. I have some people in here that have actually worked for me, and for some of the programs too, there needs to be additional training. And so, to pay people minimum wage that have to go out of their way to be trained to do more of a specialized job, you know, it costs more money. So, I think we've done a great job being able to afford the programs that we offer and the staff that we have. And I also think it's really important for people to know that Community Ed and Summer Rec are something for, they're for everyone, they're open for everyone. We don't exclude anyone, it's not elite, you don't have to qualify, you don't have to try out. We want everyone to come and learn and have opportunities and try different sports and just get that chance to have fun in the summer. So, it's, you know, it's not something where I say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you don't meet these qualifications." For gymnastics, we have started to limit the participative students that live in our district, because it has gotten so vague, and we just wanna make sure we're serving our district. They don't have to live in Melrose, but they do have to live in the school district. So, I gave you guys a bunch of paperwork. One of the things that you have is the zip code report, and I had sent this to the city last, at the end of last summer. And it's just something, the software that I use to register students, they obviously have to tell me their address, and they usually put their zip code in there. And so, it's a report I generate. I don't know if a student's zip code is 56378. It's SOC Center technically, but there's a lot of 56378s that live in our school district. There's Painesville kids in our district, there's Belgrade kids in our district. Even if their zip code is 56352, that might not mean they live in the city, they might live in our zip code. So, there's really no way for me to tell you exactly where these kids are coming from, but the 56352s are 75% of our participants. So, I would say, you know, a majority of the people who are doing Community Ed. And then I also provided you with the 2016-17 budget, and to be honest with you, this isn't what the budget that I get looks like at all. It's, or we're generating just for you. And the important numbers are, on the bottom of each, on the revenue and expenses is the starred number. So, the starred number for our revenue, and then our starred number for our expenses. And I know that paperwork makes it look like we have excessive amounts of money in our budget, but that report does not account for the costs that are not specifically coded to Summer Rec. So, there's a third page with the budget that explains additional costs that are involved with Summer Rec. And if I would be completely honest with you, I would say that I'm working for Summer Rec from February to October. So, are you, is somebody missing something?
I saw this one.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Mayor. So, and the other, the other thing is that within the budget, we don't include, we don't break down a cost for facilities for managing, maintaining our pool, for the work that the surgeons have to do to maintain our fields. And if you, if anybody's ever been in the school in the summer, you're gonna see skeletal staff, right? Me, in my summer t-shirt and shorts, running around like crazy. Business office, the secretaries are in there on and off, but you're gonna see coaches, you're gonna see Summer Rec employees, and me. And so, really, we keep that building open a lot of the time for Summer Rec. So, those costs are not included. So, when it comes down to it, with my calculator, I came up with right now that we have a fund balance of $3,428. And what we don't do, we don't mix Summer Rec money with Community Ed money. So, that's a fund balance. I also have to tell you that we, every year is not the same. If we don't have a lot of kids interested in a particular activity, our revenue may be down, because participation brings fees, fees bring money. So, it really depends on the number of participants and fees that we have. Is this all making sense? Perfect. Okay, so, I believe I was invited to the meeting because the city had suggested that I ask other cities for donations to help Summer Rec. And I did do that, and you'll see there's, I think it's the very bottom letter in your attachment. In 2016, I had sent out a letter to each one of our surrounding cities and kindly explained, you know, Summer Rec, and asked if they would be willing to contribute. And I did hear back from one, and the answer was no, and the rest of them didn't get back to me. And if you also know kind of how hectic my job and my life is, I didn't get on the phone and try to, you know, say, "I need money," partly because I didn't really need extra money, and I don't like to ask for money if I don't need it. So, I just, that's kind of my philosophy. When, for example, I do ask for money all throughout the year, we have an archery program. When we start to be, when we start to run low on funds, I ask for money. But I don't wanna have like $5,000 sitting in my youth enrichment account, because I just don't feel like that's fair, I don't think it's ethical. So, that's part of the reason that I didn't work really hard to ask for more funding. If the city of Melrose decided to reduce the funding or decided not to fund, I would probably have to do that. And I'm not sure if you, I don't know if you realize also that there are other, the other communities within our district that are offering some summer programs, and they're open to anybody. I don't know, have you guys done Skydome softball? Yeah, I mean, it's super fun, I think it's for grade, or for ages nine through 14, and then they have a 14 through 19-year-old. And I know Freeport does some activities too, they're community-driven, they're not city-driven. But I know the JCs and the Lions, you know, those kind of groups contribute. So, you know, it's really nice, and I feel like we all do things for each other. That's kind of how I see it. So, in the email, when Mike kinda asked me to present, he said, "What would happen if the donation..." That was a question you asked. So, I have a couple different scenarios here. First of all, it would decrease our revenue by about 13% right now, in a good year like this year. In a different year, it might be more. So, a couple different solutions would be that I could increase fees. And, you know, 13% isn't a huge amount, so if we're charging $20, you know, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna make something unaffordable. But, 75% of our participants are from Melrose, so those are the people that are gonna be kind of feeling the effects the most, the way I see it. I could also eliminate some programs that don't generate a lot of revenue, but I always feel like those are the little guys, and I wanna make sure that they keep going, because that's how soccer was when we first started. You know, we didn't have very many kids, but I knew it was something that a lot of kids were interested in. And I occasionally do, I do have to cancel. If I have eight kids sign up for some, a camp where I have three coaches ready to coach, or, you know, even five kids, I can't justify doing it. It's pretty rare, it's pretty rare. I don't like to cancel things, I want kids to have that opportunity. And I think people know that about me. You know, I'm pretty passionate about what I do, and I just feel like having opportunities for everybody is awesome. So, and then, you know, the other, the other solution would be to ask for donations from other groups and organizations. What I think would happen is those cities would still say no, but maybe the New Munich JCs would say yes, and the Lions would say yes. So, I do think you would be getting, we would be getting support from those communities, not necessarily the city. So, oh, and the one thing I will not do is I will not pay my staff less, because I won't have anybody working for me. It is really, really hard to find part-time people in the summer. They wanna work full-time, or they wanna work part-time and have a nice wage. And so, I just have to sell it. I have to sell how much fun it is, and, you know, they're making a great contribution, and so, you know, we do not pay our staff a lot, and most of them make minimum wage. So, it's not, it's not an option. But, so I think, you know, that was kind of what you had asked for, and I'd love any questions or feedback, and if they're deep budget questions, I'm gonna have you talk to our bookkeeper. Anybody?
Well, yes, I'll just, for a reason, you were requesting to be in public, my consistent questioning on how's the budget working.
Yeah.
It's like, we donate $250 every year, and we...
What happens with it?
Yeah. Who's gonna pay what, where the money goes, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And, from my perspective, it's not really a donation, because it's, it is a donation, but it's a forced donation, you know? In my mind, a donation is someone voluntarily gives you money.
Do you feel like I'm forcing you?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm just saying.
Because I'm really mean.
Well, we call this a donation, us five citizens, and we say, "Yeah, we're gonna pay $9,000 to our $50 of taxpayers' money, we're gonna donate it to this cost." And that's not what a charity, in my mind, it's a...
An investment?
Well, it could be an investment.
On behalf of, on behalf of the taxpayers, it's forcible for them, because they don't get a say in.
Yeah.
For us five, it's a donation.
Correct.
As city council, but John C. Public doesn't get a choice in that donation, and I think that's where you're going towards it.
Exactly.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, I'm sorry for interrupting, is that a lot of cities do have a parking rent program, and so I see it like, you know, we're partners, that's the way I look at it. And there are cities that actually have, you know, legal partnerships with Community Ed and Summer Rec. We don't have that legal partnership, but we have the financial partnership and the commitment from...
And I think another sticky point, you know, comments I've heard from people, is it's going to the school, and...
It's not.
Well, and that's the perception, though.
Correct.
It's sponsored by 5740.
That's where we're housed.
Yeah, so it's technically not a school program, right?
Right, for me, I have, I have my married own budget, all of my money is separate. But, a school district can't have a Community Ed program without a licensed director, so they, if they didn't have me or someone in my position, they wouldn't receive any of the funding and couldn't offer the programs.
And the other, the other point I wanna make is when, when a city owner takes money and it puts it in a specific area, it, in a sense, it's, maybe it is the Lions, or the JCs, or the, a different civic charitable organization that helps out with this, that makes it, because in a sense, we're taking their right to be charitable away from when government, you know, does all the spending for everyone, if that makes sense, I don't know if that...
I guess if you had a parking rent program, it would be the same thing?
Well, yeah.
So, I don't...
What I'm saying is I don't know that the donation should be coming from the city council, if that makes sense. But, oh, yeah, that's why I was questioning.
Yeah, and honestly, like, when I started working at school, somebody about probably January said, "Oh, by the way, you need to send a letter to the city requesting a donation." And so, I looked on the computer that the lady had before me, and I'm like, "Oh, there's the letter, I'll just change the date." And so, it was just one of those things, it wasn't, and I always send a thank you note, and I've come to actually report, it was a few years back, about my programs. And, you know, so, it's not something I've ever taken for granted. I've never known for sure if I was always gonna get it. And I say "I," but I don't mean "I," I'm not patting my pockets. So, but yeah, it's, it's up to you. I mean... I mean, we'll figure it out if we need to. If we don't need to, it's awesome, but, you know, Dan from Waste Management just asked if I needed sponsors, and I said, "Not right now, but maybe I will." So, you know, what'd you say?
Maybe after the meeting, can I...
Yeah, maybe. He gave me his business card.
Well, and that's, and that's, that's where I, you know, so Waste Management could have their name on the program, you know, as, are we taking other people's thunder away from them by filling that budget gap that you may have?
I don't think anybody cares that their thunder's being stolen, but I don't know.
Well, there's a lot to tell you.
Jim, if I...
There's only money, and...
Yeah, no, and honest, to be honest with you guys, my archery program is one, one good example. It's very expensive. I mean, the bows and the arrows and the targets alone, I'm sorry, tell me if I need to shut up, because I got called windy today. But, you know, that program is so expensive, and like, we just took all of our equipment to archery country to have it serviced, and it was $430. You know, that, that, and, but, I knew I had $430, but guess what? I don't have any more money. So then, I sent out letters. I sent a letter to the Lions, and I sent a letter to the Green Grove Rock and Gun Club, and I said, "Hey, can you guys help us out?" But I, and they and other groups have said to me, "I hope you're not just asking us." And I'm like, "Nope, I got a list, and I'm rotating," because I also don't want people to feel like, "Wow, we get asked by this, this baseball team." And, you know, there's a lot of travel team baseballs, like baseball teams, there's JO, there's a lot of other teams that are asking for big donations. I actually don't want, I don't want them to not be getting funding because they're getting it out of community ed, so...
Carol, are you listening?
You know, I, for example, with Zipco, just straight up, I mean, when you look at New Munich, part of that town are Melrose's, Zipco's. You look at Omaya Grove, a lot of them are all Melrose addresses, even in going right in, I think the first housing spring hills are Melrose addresses. So, Marlowe's Post though, it's really stretched. You know, Freeport is really stretched. So it is sad that the other communities might not be helping out with this, because, you know, we do do a lot for our school district, the city of Melrose does. It would be nice if, on your behalf, you know, that they start stepping up a little bit to help out, because we are one big community.
We are.
You know, and there's a lot of programs that you've offered that I've taken that, "Why would I do this?" You know, but it benefits people, you know, just like the computer classes that you've offered in the past, you know, wonderful, for some, you know, for older people that have no clue how to use a computer, on my part, some good success that you had with that. Even when you have scuba diving, I know a lot of our firefighters did those classes. Some things you just don't get around here.
Right.
You'd have to go to St. Cloud, you have to go to Alexandria, and then when you're there, you're gonna spend more money there. I'd rather see people spend more money in our area.
Well, when my kids were little, one of them said to me, "Why would anybody ever come to Melrose?" And I said, "For community ed." But, you know, it's called enrichment. It's called youth enrichment, it's called adult enrichment. You don't, you're maybe not always learning something, but it's enriching your life, so...
Yeah, I don't, honestly, I don't think anyone of us is questioning...
No, I'm just waving my flag here. I'm it at our school.
We would like to try to help you too.
No, I, and that's why I started out saying, "I appreciate it."
Hey Carol, you heard what I said?
I think he wants you to emphasize the other towns.
Yeah, so I agree.
And what I will say is, I mean, you look at 17 years of almost $10,000, that's a lot of money, so thank you. And if you change your mind, there will be no hard feelings whatsoever. I'll just get my donation list out and start pounding the pavement.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I think, you know, if we wanted to make a change, I think it would be, we would do it slowly, to seal it down over a number of years, and see if you can fill that budget gap from the other areas, or Lions, or...
You guys have any hope?
Carol, I... We hope this can be a little more of a salary free, I mean, it gets on TV and stuff in the paper, you know, it just, try to help you out.
Yeah.
We just wanna get everything rolling, rolling, rolling.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I take a quick picture of you guys to put on Facebook with my donation information? Cause you did it with credit.
No, it was for you. The camera doesn't break.
I was just joking.
No, it's a picture. Come on.
I was just joking.
Stacy, get it.
Take a picture of Stacy's.
And say Stacy, Union. Perfect.
Thanks. You send it to me.
It's already in your box.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry it was so windy.
No, Stacy, where are you swaying?
Stacy, yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, if you want one.
Chief Mouse?
Good evening, I should be shorter. Monthly statistics for February 2018 in our traffic area, we have 29 citations listed in there. When I was going through things, I thought that was high. What ended up happening is some administrative citations which got put in there for trap, or excuse me, for parking, as well as two misdemeanor citations that were issued for domestic assault and one other issue. So it should be closer to 15 for actual traffic related things, which is consistent where we normally are. Verbal warnings, 57, and written warnings, 22. Almost every last one of those is for parking related issues. For the month of February in 2018, we had 338 calls or requests for service, and last year was 253, so we're up by 85 calls there. And we ended this year at 680 in, or excuse me, we're up to 680 at the end of February and 502 last year, so we're ended by about 178 calls. Our 2018 numbers reflect our 2016 numbers more accurately, as you guys remember, in 2017, we lost two officers right away in the beginning of the year, and that slowed the whole world down for us. So we do a lot more work in that period of time this year than we were last year, so. 19 agency assists, those are down by about five or 10 than we normally are at. No rhyme or reason to that, just didn't need as much help all over the place, cold weather, whatever the story is. Some updates, I went to first aid training last month. It's a training related to, the government is creating a separate, shouldn't say the government, a company is creating a separate network for public safety employees. This would include police, fire, ambulance, and then a secondary kind of situation for streets, electric, and anybody else that would need to assist in a big event. It's built up the AT&amp;T network, so they don't have to try and build their own network. They got a contract with AT&amp;T, so it's got good coverage, that kind of thing. So what would end up happening is I register my phone number with them, I'd have to become an AT&amp;T subscriber. 200 comes from Melrose, my phone works, another AT&amp;T subscriber doesn't, because I get priority over those other folks. Sterns County Emergency Management has a similar program in place already, just learned of that this week actually, so that's kind of surprising, but similar thing can happen with my phone. There's issues bringing it from other carriers and whatever else, but those things can be resolved on the road if I would or the city would decide to create that for our public safety units. So that was a program I attended, I attended that on behalf of the ambulance and the fire department, just so I can update you on the, pass that information on them. Related to our parking situation, we talked last month about notifying owners prior to issuing all the citations and towing vehicles. We did do that with one vehicle, and we still ended up towing the vehicle to his lighter that still didn't have it moved or taken care of, so they were notified, they shook their head yes, and said they'd take care of it, and it got towed anyway, so obviously they didn't make the effort. Some things that have been happening as well, counterfeit $100 bills came flying through Melrose a week and a half ago or so. They are the 1988 bells and holders is the design that they used. The pens that made it look like it was legitimate and real, problem was is two or three went through a business all with the same serial number, they're both keeping the bar caught it, and that's how we were notified about it. So we do have pictures of folks, but we don't have a single name, and nothing seems to match up the rest of the state that we sent it out to, says, "No clue, wish we could." So, kind of stuck on those for right now. Worked on some issues related to side-by-side, so Rangers, prowlers, mules, and whatever other flavors out there. So people had some questions about, "Does that meet the ordinance related to the permit we issue for golf carts?" Our current ordinance says that anything less than 1,000 pounds or 1,000 cc's or less would count as an ATV. This definition came from the state's definition of an ATV. It had not been updated since these machines became as big as they have. So the state of Minnesota now says anything 2,000 pounds or less is considered an ATV. So what we would need to do in our ordinance, in my opinion anyway, is to bring that up to 2,000 pounds, so that we're following the same rules, so we could follow ATVs within the, or excuse me, side-by-sides in the same class that issue permits, and have them operate in the same golf carts and smaller ATVs. There is a question about, "Do we need to do that? Should we just allow them to operate as the rules of the state apply to them, where they can drive on city streets, county roads, and all those other sorts of things?" My opinion is no, and that's basically for a safety standard. Side-by-sides could go on to Connerville 13, Fifth Avenue Northeast, Main Street, Fifth Avenue Southeast, all the roads that we have restrictions upon because of safety concerns, semi, high volume of traffic, and all sorts of things. So that's the whole reason that some of these roads got restricted is for safety concerns of the folks that are using those machines. There is some concern as far as, well as the machines, you can buy one machine that's just slightly under 1,000 pounds, would fall as an ATV, would fall under the ordinance, and you truly add 10 cc's to that machine, and now you are over the 1,000 pounds, it would not be part of the ordinance. So there could be some gray areas and some confusion there for the officers as well as the owners of the machines, but that can be discussed maybe at the annual meeting, unless, I didn't find it directly in this chapter, but usually within our ordinance it says to be, something's changed without notice, some, 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 some. Basically, if state law changes, we don't have to go out and count every state law, you know, make sure that we catch them. But that's maybe a better question for Scott, and if we need to change the ordinance, my recommendation is we bring it up to the...
So, that's long and short of what happened in the Police Department for the month of February. Any questions?
Mike, is that something we wanna have on an agenda for next month to talk about again?
What's your guess?
What we can actually do is, between Craig and I and Patty, we can come up with a draft ordinance with that language, and just, and see what you guys think. I'd like to revisit if we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, we'll keep on issuing until we go near...
I have a question here, probably six, maybe it was even longer, six months ago or so, a resident brought it to our attention, issues with drugs in the city of Melrose. Do you, how do I wanna say that? You know, in your report, and I was going to look at it before I came, I couldn't pull it up, but, how many drug-related incidences are there in the last year for Melrose? And this would not be alcohol, if I can, marijuana.
All I get in front of me is the monthly, because we're here, so I couldn't give you a good answer on that. I know that we had a strong citation rate on marijuana, and I wouldn't say it was like November, I think we issued six or eight citations for possession of marijuana or possession of drug paraphernalia pipes.
Sure.
And those sorts of things, so otherwise it would be, I would have to say it's hit or miss in between there, maybe two a month or something like that, where we're finding that.
Are most of those just kind of incidental things where, you know, you pull them over for traffic stop and then you find them, right?
Generally, yes, you pull them over for something minor, and you come up with a vehicle, and you smell it in the vehicle, and come up with half of that.
And then, any, any other activity where you would be actively trying to seek out drug-related things that's left up to the task force?
That's who we pass everything through.
Okay.
Yep, we pass the information on to them. If it's, you know, if we get good information, they definitely get it, and then we help with the eyes and ears of the situation. Sometimes they're already working that case, so it's a bonus, but sometimes new information that connects, so...
And there hasn't been anything in the last while where something, incidents or arrests have been made, is there?
No, nothing, nothing that would hit the papers, or nothing that's been shocking, very normal activity that they've been doing, or that would be a home drop.
Not saying the problem's gone away, but...
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Where are we at with our offices now?
Well, depending on about five things down the agenda, we should be doing pretty well, depending on...
We'll be fine.
That will bring us back to focus, yes.
At that point, on, this, so I'll say one thing for a second, look, you know, I was gonna bring that up when you're back to five officers, you know, and stuff. With the drug task force, I don't know how much time that can come, you know, obviously they're undercover as much as, you know, as far as we know, whatever. But has the drug situation that was brought up, has that improved or not? And if it has not, because obviously it has happened, but do we at some point kind of take it upon ourselves and say, you know what, we're gonna do something about it, because obviously we can't fully rely on outside assistance? And if we get back to a point where we feel confident that we can allocate all the extra time for investigating some of this, I don't know if that's part of our specialty or not, but...
My opinion would be, if things go in the police department's favor later in the agenda, the officer that we have made an offer to enjoys their traffic enforcement, and that is a big area on what we can proactively do looking for these things. As far as, if we're not thinking that we're getting the benefit from the task force that we could, I know Sartell actually has an actual officer that they assign to the unit to do things, and I don't know that we want to... I'll take another officer anytime we can, but to pay a full-time employee to be part of that investigative team, or to work our area or Melrose specifically, could be a big financial burden for the, for the city, but I think there'd be some benefit, I don't know that it offsets what they could and couldn't do, to be honest.
Yeah, and I don't know what it would look like, you know, plan to look like, but we have five full-time officers, you know, obviously a double coverage for them. Is there, I don't wanna say state, or whatever, but you know, is there, is there a time when, you know, they take the city vehicle and they go, not in a police car, but they go sit somewhere and watch?
Yeah, they sat in their private vehicles before.
That's what I learned.
And some of our forfeiture vehicles that we've got from DWIs and drug-related things, we've used those to sit in periodically as well, when they get started again. They sit for a lot. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief. Scott?
Yeah, just a quick rundown here, the cable franchise renewal, that'll come before you later in the agenda. Cable companies have to have a franchise agreement with the city, and the one we have with Charter expired last month. The, so, you know, they want to stay, they wanna renew the agreement, but technically, we don't have a final agreement to present you tonight, and they're not comfortable, and I don't think we should be comfortable with having them operate without something in place. So we got a one-page agreement just saying that, you know, the terms of the existing franchise are extending to the end of the year, and we would expect to have something in place one year. And this is, these cable franchise agreements have 15-year terms, so you put it in place and you forget about it for 15 years, and then all of a sudden it's ending, and it's like, where'd the 15 years go? This one, with Charter came up, and RVX was put in place a year or two after Charter's, so that will be coming up in the next year or two as well. We're not expecting any real big changes in any of these agreements.
The only thing that we do anticipate changing is we're gonna try to get the same type of language that we have for our Sprint leases that we have, and Verizon leases, where they pay for the legal fees associated to renewing these contracts. I've had conversation with Amanda Duer, who's the prime contractor, contracting officer, technical rep with the company, to start the process to get going on this. The city staff has, was approached him about six, seven months ago to start the process to get this thing renewed, and discussion started, and we never heard back multiple times. So, so technically, under the law, they still have an ability to renew the contract, because of the federal rules associated to it, it's... of the federal rules associated to it. But, bottom line is that we're looking for a, until December 31st extension, allow them the time to review some of the comments as well.
Yeah, and then, like you said, we have to look at it for fifteen years, so we have to make sure that most of the terms in those contracts are revised for federal statutes and regulations, and we want to make sure that we're not just carrying old, old references that aren't in place anymore, so we want to make sure it's current. I'm not expecting, I remember when this was done fifteen years ago, and it was difficult and drawn out, and I think the world has just changed a lot in fifteen years. Fifteen years ago, Charter was the only game in town if you wanted to. Since then, we got another cable operator, you know, dishes have come and gone, or may still use them, plus anything you can get over the internet. You know, Charter doesn't, and the cable companies don't swing as big a stick as they used to, you know, so they're, I'm kind of even wondering if fifteen years from now they'll even be around and renewing and get another, another agreement still. But, we'll put it in place, we'll get something in place. First Street Northeast, just a technical thing, you know, when that work gets done, city staff approached some of the adjacent property owners across the street here that on the south side that have parking lots, and, you know, did we, did they want us to include, you know, resurfacing their lot at the same time that we're doing this work with the streets? And I think some of that may be, if we're doing utilities, if some of that would cut into their lots and then you'd have patches and such, and we could include in the contract and leave the whole thing if you would agree to that, reimburse the city for that cost. And I think some of them did, some of them didn't want it, and so the ones that said yes, we wanted to get it in writing, that yes, they will pay us back, you know, for the resurfacing, that's done as part of the project. The East Substation, it's more of a public utilities thing, just so you folks are aware of. We've had some problems with one of the contractors on that project delivering their materials in a timely fashion, and so we're, we're sort of not, we're not happy with their performance, and so we're trying to rub their feet to the fire a little bit.
All right.
Any questions? Anything else? Let you get on with the rest of the agenda.
All right. Well, it goes all the way down to seven G, the Charter cable franchise agreement, can I get a motion to approve that?
Go, go.
Mount Pierce, aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I just wanted to let you know, as I did reach out to a couple other cable providers, asked them if they were interested in coming to our fair community, and they said that, like what Scott referenced, the technology is changing and they're shifting away from different overbuilding models, which they would have to overbuild here in Melrose, and they have opted not to pursue conversations for that. So, just wanted to let you know that I did reach out to them before that.
Okay. Classification and sale of tax forfeited properties.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have several parcels in our community here that are for tax forfeiture. One of them is referred to, you may remember, the Seth Peterson property, the city council ordered demolition of that property. The special assessments on that, I believe, were a little over twenty thousand dollars. The five years have now passed, nobody has purchased that property, therefore the, those specials fall off. It's staff's recommendation to recertify them, to put them back on the, put them back on the log again, and to, to recertify them lest the interest that's been accruing on that parcel. If the city so chooses, if somebody does, say the adjacent property owners want to buy that property, they can come before the city council and ask them to waive those special assessments if, at that time, but, but for now, our staff would recommend that we do recertify those funds to capture that. We also have another parcel in question, it's, we're referring to it as the Rose Park parcel, where the storage sheds are, there's what twelve thousand four hundred dollars worth of special assessments on there. They're legacy ones dating to many, many years ago, and so we're recommending to recertify those as well. All others do not have special assessments, and we would recommend to recertify them, and also that we are not declaring any of these parcels as conservation. So, what will happen is if the council approves this tonight, next month they will come back to the city council asking us if we would like to take possession of any of these lots. And then at that time, that's where the council would have to make a determination if we would want these lots or not, into the public purchasing for public use. Or we could buy it for fair market price and then try to develop the parcel as well. But, that would be next month's. Did I miss anything, Scott?
No, I, like you say, it just, you know, these parcels have worked in the state, so they now own what's given, and so then, when that happens, the county, county becomes basically the state's provider. And so, this is, you know, part of their process. Before, they will list it on their website, available properties, you know, they got to identify whether it's conservation or not conservation, what are they going to list it for, you know, they get an appraisal, you know, different assessments, so they can include that, what we're calling their listing. And then, the last step is reported, goes out to the public for sale, we'll see if the city's got any interest in these properties, before they can sell it up, list it up on their public site as a way to purchase. It's all, it's just not part of the process. The conservation, non-conservation, if they think there's some kind of ornamental or other conservation, preservation value to a property, the county would push to have it classified as conservation, and that just would go up for sale, state keep it. They're not recommending that for the purposes here at all. They want to get it on market, see if it does work.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, we'd be looking for a motion to certify the, to recertify the special assessments as presented in the memo.
Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Being a second.
Second.
Mount Pierce, aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Just a clarification, is that with or without the interest on both cars?
Without.
That's right. Without, that's all.
Scott, is there anything else we have to do for a motion there? I don't think so, I think that's it.
No.
Next month will be the next one where we...
Well, I would like a motion that we, there's two separate forms there. One is that we're accepting the classification and ordering the checks to be sold at public sale.
So, we would order them to be at the public sale, that would be the motion.
Well, if we walk to public sale, just accepting the classification, because they're going to come back and ask us if we want any of these, right? But, if you have that separate one for the assessment.
Right.
We could, we could say that we, we could make that determination, and that's just a motion today.
You could, you could if you wanted to tonight, just preemptively.
I don't know, I think we had the discussion last night.
You did not want...
We didn't feel, well, I guess, from my perspective, I don't know, we should just be able to take possession of these properties when there's taxes owed against them, number one, and is it really fair that government did its first dibs on property versus the general public for sale? If they put it for public sale, and, you know, who knows what they get, what they get sold for, so...
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, when I talked to Laurie Gross, the way this process works is tonight you take action, approving their classification, and then it can be sold public sale, and they come back to the city and offer first right of refusal, almost like two steps. Right now, they just need to know that unless you're not going to offer them for public, I guess, maybe I understand that. I mean, I spoke to Laurie, and that's what, they need the council to approve that classification is not conservation, and to approve it being sold, and if the city wants it, they have that option, then at the next step to pass employee out of that.
We're looking for, we don't want an option for it?
Don't, take that back.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You'll say?
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Good now?
Thank you.
Police Department hire, Craig?
Okay, so we had an opening, you guys approved the ability for us to go up and search for candidates. We had fifteen applications, we ended up interviewing six. We made an offer to Matt Mormon, who is currently a part-time officer with our department. He is accepting that offer and pending council approval, and a successful psychological test, physical examination, and background. We would be willing to hire him at this point. Potential start date would be March twenty eighth, twenty sixth. Twenty sixth, that Monday, if all goes well.
How long has Matt been out?
Six years. Six years, he's a part-time with us.
So, he'll be coming in at step, so he would be following his longevity that he currently has in place right now, which is a little over a year of actual tenure here at the city, so he would be coming in at step one.
Can you get a motion for a two-pleas?
So move.
Do you have a second?
No, second.
Mount Pierce, aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Old Business, two thousand eighteen Micro Seal Street Project.
So, the Micro Seal has been presented, WSB did their engineering for us, no, excuse me, Micro Seal, no, staff did the research on this one. We received one bid of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, it's staff's recommendation to approve as presented. I think our original estimate was fifty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Can I just make a real quick, now, this is micro surface, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, same thing that we have on craft.
Okay, because that, Micro Seal always throws me for a loop, because it sounds like seal coat, but it's actually a surf, a micro surface, I think is what it's...
And we had two bids.
Was it Aztec and Partner?
One was forty-five and the other one...
And the budget was fifty?
Yep.
Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mount Pierce, aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Two thousand eighteen Batumness Chip Seal Street Project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, bids were open for the two thousand eighteen Chip Seal Project. We received three bids, the low bid was Aztec Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. The bids ranged all the way up to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, it's our recommendation to award the bid to Aztec in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And Gary had brought up tonight that he would like to add in Railroad Avenue to have a fog seal on it. We had, in the bid, we had Craft Drive, the new section east, and then the older section west that was going to get a fog seal. He would like to add the Railroad Avenue. I don't have quantities in front of me, but it's probably going to be in that four thousand dollar range, plus or minus, just based on the length from what we've got now. You don't need to approve that tonight, I just wanted to make you aware. We'll bring back exact numbers at the next meeting, got plenty of time to do that before we're going to be out chip sealing here, so... Are there any questions?
What was the budget?
We had estimated a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think the budget was a...
Hundred and sixty-two.
Hundred and sixty-something.
Can I get a bid, oh, can I get a motion for the contract to Aztec for a amount of one hundred and eight, four ninety-seven, and sixty-five cents?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mount Pierce, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Rock Arch Dam. Going too fast.
I haven't got a lot of new information. Just to kind of recap, we were looking at the single-span bridge. Based on the location of sliding that bridge to the north, the south abutment was taller than what Mendoc likes. We looked at a two-span bridge, because of removing the dam and straightening out the channel, that velocity presented a scour problem for the center pier on the bridge. Now, we're looking at a three-span bridge, which would have piers kind of open up the middle of the channel again, and we would have little triangular pieces on each end of the, the bridge. Our bridge guy has been on vacation too the last four weeks, so he'll be back Monday. And if that doesn't work out, I guess what I'm going to recommend to our guys is that they go to Mendoc and try to get them to relook at the single-span bridge with the taller abutment on the south side, or potentially we may have to slide that bridge a little bit further south to get that south abutment buried in the existing embankment, so...
This is all due to the Rock Arch Rapids?
Yes, correct.
So, is there a way to, because of the, because of the velocities on Rock Arch Rapids are going to carry under the community bridge now and down...
Correct, yes.
So, you came with the volume for what are, with the slower heated velocities on the bridge? If, if you design that, drag that Rock Arch Rapids west further, make it, make that the most, you know, the god expensive thing on earth to entertain the idea yet, however unrealistic it is, to get the single-span bridge approved, over the cost of, you know, the entire purpose of where we started looking at reading the bridge and now Rock Arch Rapids has gone all this?
Yeah, the velocity is a direct result of the length of the Rock Arch Rapids, I mean, to, the steeper it is, the faster the water goes. If we were to stretch that out another two or three hundred feet, lower it down to about a three percent slope, I think that would bring our velocities down, that, I think we would still have the south abutment issue with the single-span. But, then for sure, I do believe that a two-span bridge would work. Cost-wise, we'd have to certainly look at that. You know, the difference between Melrose and Hutchinson is the volume of water. We've got two to three times the water coming through the channel, and then also the drop on our dam is twelve feet versus, I think, the seven, six or seven or somewhere in there. So, our Rock Arch Rapids is getting spread out more, so... Again, we hope to make some progress on looking at the three-span bridge. Costs there, again, I don't think will be much more, because of the two spans, or the three spans, our beam depth will be shallower, so I think bridge costs will be comparable, Then we did submit a draft request for the LCCMR that went in, I think, yesterday, so we'll, I think we get either shortlisted, and if we're shortlisted, then they ask for additional information, I believe is the process, so...
The LCCMR grant is a very, very drawn-out, long, long process. We won't actually even know if we're awarded the funds until July, until May of next, twenty nineteen. So, the, but we will know if we're on the shortlist, as Mike referred to it as, by July of this coming calendar year. So, and we'll be basically penciled in, and then it's a legislative political decision from there if they fund it or not.
Yeah, so any, you know, any political work we can do with our legislators between now and then, I think certainly will be beneficial, and, and so if you get that opportunity, please take advantage of it, so...
So, what are we going to do for this motion?
Well, the, the idea here is that we're, is that we need to find, we need to secure funding for this project, and the way the LCCMR grant is written right now is that we're leveraging our bridge project with our LCCMR, so we're saying that our, some of the monies that we're putting towards the bridge is coming towards the LCCMR Rock Arch Rapids. But if that doesn't happen, the question is, is the city willing to provide any type of partnership towards the Rock Arch Rapids? And so, for staff to be looking for funding sources or... And so for staff to be looking for funding sources, or we just don't want to be wasting our time if it's, if the answer's zero. We want to pay absolutely zero for a partnership into the Rock Arch Rapids. We just wanted to help clarify that in regards to our, into our efforts. We are submitting for a bonding request for the Rock Arch Rapids. I had a conversation with Senator Westrom and Anderson yesterday, they will submit it. However, the bonding bill at the state legislative session yesterday, the Democrats are pushing for about a billion dollars. The House Republicans are pushing for about 560, 580. So there's a huge difference there in regards to bonding dollars. And Melrose is, since this is our first ask for it, it's probably going to be a couple of years out before something we're going to get there. So, but most of the time for funding projects like this, you're seeing upwards to, like we said here, Mike was guesstimating as of right now, 1.5 million, I think it was, for the, one, excuse me, 1.8 million dollars for the Rock Arch Rapids. You're seeing generally a 25% match that the local entity would have to pay to be a considerable candidate for some of these other programs and funds out there. DNR funds, and even though DNR did say that they were going to basically fund it for us, but that's not a reality, so.
As far as the funding level, I think we are, we are already investing quite a bit towards it. And I thought that that all counted, all the engineering and specifications and stuff like that. But all those expenses come toward these funding requests as far as the percentage match, is that...
No, yes and no. The, most of the time, these, once you sign a contract, it's everything after the date of the award. But we do have some, there are some funds out there that will allow you to use your design work, but not all do. Some do, some don't. Most don't.
So strictly in construction?
Well, there was a design which I think would be eligible. I mean, the bulk of the cost yet for the designer to come, I mean, we're still in pretty much preliminary, so. I certainly believe that for some of these grants where they are eligible, that the bulk of our, the engineering fees, both for designing and construction, would be eligible. So, you know, moving forward, some of the stuff that, you know, has been paid to date or will be paid up to that date may be in-kind type for some of these grants, but...
Well, and so, we're fortunate too, because we did have a conversation with our watershed, Socrates watershed. They gave us preliminary conceptual support for some type of partnership with them, which we could then use for the bridge, for the armament. So we could use those dollars that we were going to pay for the bridge to pay for our portion of the Rock Arch Rapids in the future. So I mean, that's how we're, that's how staff has been kind of working these things behind the scenes, how we can make it work on a balance sheet somehow. So we're just looking at different ways that we can do that. And it's hard to pull a number out of the air, but, so really what we're looking for is, we can't really get a percentage of it from you because that's not fair to you, because you don't know what you're committing to. But I think the reality is, is there will have to be a certain percentage partnership in the future. And that's just something that the council would have to acknowledge really more tonight than anything. Or if you say, no, we don't even want to even consider a percentage, no matter what it is. If it's zero, then that's, we just need to know that, so then we have to work back into it, so.
All right. What do you think, Tony?
That's a good question. I mean, originally, we started, we started entertaining the Rock Arch Rapids 50%, and then before the funding.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did, absolutely did.
Where does that leave us all to lead?
You know, when you look in here, though, we're talking about, you know, the 2011 bond is going to fall off, so we can rebond, I'm not a fan of that.
I'm not a fan of that either.
The last option. It's not an option, in my mind. Okay, all right, that's good.
But do we say, yeah, we would match 10%?
Percentage is tricky.
You know, up to 100.
Up to, yeah, you can cap it.
Yeah. Something to that effect. And then see if all of our design expenses, engineering, and so see if that comes to...
Like I said, it's hard for us to ask for you to give us a number tonight, because it is, it's hard, because you don't know. But I mean, if we come back to you, if we're saying that, we have to get permission from this council anyway, to approve anything before we submit a formal application, which would then outline what that is. So I think that's probably the way to go, is that, but you do anticipate, I mean, we just want the council to acknowledge that there may be some dollars that are for the capital side that may have to go from the general fund to do that.
And that we're still just talking about Rock Arch Rapids?
That's it.
This is nothing to the channel realignment bridge, you know. I would argue that part of the channel, but I'm going to pass that on for the Rock Arch Rapids. I don't know, I don't know if you could do a Rock Arch Rapids with the current bridge location.
Uh, no. No, I mean, yes. Without moving the bridge, without realigning the channel, the Rock Arch Rapids really can't happen, right?
I think some of how we got into this, we acknowledged we were going to have to spend money either way on either dam repair or dam replacement in the near future. Well, relatively near, right, future. So we did, we're going to spend money, we're going to spend money either way.
Right.
Would you call that damn money then?
Damn money. That's exactly right.
All right. What are you making of that?
I don't know what we put on.
I think you just say it's consensus that you acknowledge that there's going to be a partnership that the city's going to have to do, and we don't know what that was.
We're tasked with this, but we need more information before I'm comfortable with the dollar mark. I can't ask you to do that, I just...
Yeah, and we, you know, without even a preliminary design in the Rock Arch Rapids, I'm only guessing at a number of, you know, a dollar cost anyhow. So I think what we were looking for was just some theory that if there's a grant available that does have some match to it, that either we should look at it or not, so.
Yeah. I don't know, do you need a motion?
No, it's consensus. Okay.
All right, well, I don't think you should go sit down yet.
That's my agenda.
First Street Northeast Project.
Uh, bids, uh...
Twenty-second?
Are due the 22nd, I believe at 11:00 AM. I checked the bidders list yesterday, we have 21 prime contractors that have taken out plans. I can't guarantee they'll all bid, but I think that's really good that we're getting that kind of interest, so. Based on that, I'm, you know, hoping that the numbers come in really well. So at the next council meeting, we'll have bid numbers for you. One of the things that kind of came up last week, I guess, was the potential, you know, we had been looking at the developer and the craft lot and the soils remediation on that area. I, we don't know that we're going to have any contaminated soil that we need to dispose of in the right of way, but in an effort to be ahead of that game, I did send out an addendum that included excavation of contaminated material and hauling. I did get numbers from Waste Management at their Upper River facility that can take petro, petrochemical soil, so we've got a number for that. So that's based on the content of the hazardous material. So what I'm proposing is that we bid just the excavation and hauling, and that if there is some that the city paid, that Waste Management invoiced directly, not through the contractor. So it's easier for them to bid excavation and hauling numbers. So I guess that's more for information. I guess what's on the agenda is that there is some monitoring and testing that has to go on during the excavation. And essentially, it would be from the east side of the city center here, as far as just a little bit past Fourth Avenue. We've got storm sewer, water main, and sanitary that's going to go in. Based on the soil borings, I think we're right on the edge, based on depth, location, and the right of way. So hopefully, there won't be any, but we have to be ready to detect it and evaluate how much is there, so.
And when you're doing that with your bids, Mike, you're doing that at just a unit price?
Uh, for the excavate and haul?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was...
And you're carrying contingency for that, and let be a change order?
Uh, it would actually be an alternate bid. You know, we bid the base...
But you know the volume, how could you do that?
Uh, we don't. We estimated that it'd be about 200 cubic yards, so that number is variable. There is money available through the Petro Fund for work in the public right of way. It takes a fairly short application. Mike and I talked about whether we should apply for that. There potentially is some money left over from the 400 block funding that could be used. However, I think it would be a good idea, you know, to apply for the brownfield or Petro Fund. So in that number that we had provided in that proposal, I think it was $6,600 to apply for the Petro Fund money. That was about $1,100 for the application, and the rest of it would be for the sniffing mechanism and the operator to be there on site while they're excavating, so. Hopefully, we wouldn't find anything, and then we wouldn't have to be out there for the full three days that, you know, we think it's going to take to install those utilities, so.
So we would move to, staff would move to recommend to adopt this sniffing contract, if you want to call it that, for oversight for the, for potential contamination on the site.
It's a phase of utilities.
Uh, no, it's, Will? Yeah?
I don't know if this has been all grassed or...
We wouldn't need to.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Yeah, you're right.
It's utilities from, that needs to disturb the soil. I bet it matters, it's either rape here or infection, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I certainly think it could be a cost-share type agreement. The storm sewer is going to be the closest to the craft lot. However, based on the depth of the soil borings, it would be more the sanitary sewer than I would expect that would encounter the hazardous material, so.
I'll be, I'll be able to allocate the funds accordingly through the utility. Since it's under 10,000, I can make an adjustment to that, so. And I'll let the commission know that Tony Bosson has added against it.
A question, Mike, you obviously, you would have to have an engineer on site then to monitor this, right?
Yes.
And not to take money out of your pocket, but your engineers are not cheap. Somebody like Braun or ITT or someone that does do this as well, no offense, charge is about half as much.
Uh, that I don't know. I mean, we certainly could get a proposal.
I'd like to at least know that that's the case versus, and again, not trying to take money out of your pocket, but I'm trying to take money out of your pocket.
Yeah. I can certainly check, I mean, I...
Maybe I'm out of line?
Uh, we can certainly get a proposal from ITT and Braun, I mean, that's...
I don't know that ITT does it, I know Braun does it.
Okay, yeah. You know, I guess what I was going to, I think I wrote a proposal that we were probably going to try to drill some test holes and sniff, and if it's not there, we go away. But I'll certainly get a proposal from Braun, so.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to do that? I want a motion.
A second.
I'm there, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, some more carry. Craft Lot redevelopment.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the council an update on what's going on with this. We have a, well, the council knows, we had a meeting here while we were talking about the craft lot with a potential developer. Both the council as well as the developer were interested in continuing conversations. And so that's where that's at today still. Yesterday, I testified in front of the House, excuse me, the Senate Public Safety Committee. We did get a preliminary approval to go on to the next step for a, instead of a five-year extension, we granted a three-year extension. So that was a, that was a win for Melrose. Now it goes before the Senate Tax Committee. And so then it'll also go before the House Tax Committee, so I'll have to go back down and testify again. Unless somebody would like to join me next time and do that, I would appreciate it. Then also, the, most likely, it will be part of the omnibus tax bill. So we won't know if this is a go until the tax bill, and that'll be on the last day of the last hour. And so staff is still moving forward with a June 30th deadline to expend all these funds and trying to come for solutions for that, as well as discussing the incentives to create this partnership that we have with this potential developer. I don't really have anything else to provide an update. We will be most likely calling a special council meeting before next council to discuss potential terms at a special meeting, special closed meeting most likely. Depending on that, I don't have any other updates for you on that.
Villiers Business Assistant Agreement.
Yeah, Jim and Lisa are here today. We have come together with them for potential terms to help them recover from the, from the disaster that we had here this past year. We came to an agreement in regards to what those terms are as outlined within the memo here. And Jim is comfortable with it, so are Lisa, our development consultant is comfortable with it. We've also discussed this with the council at the terms, so therefore, it's staff's recommendation to approve the business assistance as outlined within your memo here this evening. And we have the funds sitting in the office, so we just have to wait for approval from you to approve this.
All right, looking for a motion to approve.
Some more.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
One more question, on the, that 85,000?
Yep.
That is, with this business agreement, that is, that's done, right, that's...
Yep, that work is completely done.
Okay, so that is a...
To receive any, to receive the additional funds, that other work, other...
I heard through the agreement that it looked like everything else had been met before the 85 was paid out.
No, 85 can be paid out today.
All right.
All right, let me have a first and a second. I'm there, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, some more carry.
Thank you.
All right, Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail.
Yes, the, the park, the city council at its last meeting had a discussion where we talked about adopting a pathways master plan development proposal. And Ship was here, as well as Central Care was here, Sterns was here to discuss that. The council at that time said, please have the Parks Board to consider this. The Parks Board has reviewed the proposal and felt that it was an appropriate action to consider. The cost to do this is about $13,000. We do have partnerships already committed from Central Care as well as the school district. And this Parks Board has said that they would also pledge to do this as well. I have two potential, we also have one grant out there for about $4,000 that we don't know if that's been awarded yet. If that is awarded, we would then break those funds up differently. By a percentage wise, instead of the city paying roughly 1,500, it would be $1,068, which would be the percentage equal upon each of the parties involved. Having said that, Justin, the Parks Board recommended to, to move forward with this, developing a comprehensive master plan, and defer to the, to you or the council for guidance. And the ladies are here tonight, if you have any questions about the program, I think we've got a new face in the audience here too as well. Maybe you could introduce who she is or what the new people are and...
Yeah. My name is Hannah Dackenor, if I work for Central Care Health, a community health initiative called Field of Minnesota, that's Central Care Fund. While I'm working on bicycle pedestrian access in communities as opposed to food access. So helping with the farmers market conversation here too.
I'm Allison Decker, we're pursuing fund of public health. And in public health, we currently have the ship grant, state health improvement partnerships, and looking at active transportation and how we can partner with cities to improve walking and biking in their communities. One of our big goals for that grant.
I'm Deanna Parton-C, I also work for Sturridge County Public Health, and I work on these initiatives as well.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. All right, provide consideration to endorse contract with WSB to develop master trail plan. Can you get a motion to approve, please?
Do we have the ship grant or not?
We do, the, Will?
So, Sturridge County, we have $10,000 in our budget that has been approved by the Minnesota Department of Health for the grant.
And it would just be a matter of going through the contract process with St. John's County once, but we can't do that until the government approves and we're going. So, there's no-
Contingent upon the award of the grant?
Well, contingent upon the award of the grant, oh, the dent, yes, the dent, yes.
Right. Otherwise, if we move forward, we don't have that.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, you made a motion?
No, I'd love to Parks guy to do that.
All right.
He's gonna be the guy attending all the meetings.
Can you get a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Did you want to discuss before you came in?
I, I do like to, not saying that, you know, I'll repeat what I said last time. Not saying having a plan to do something like this is a bad thing. But once you have the plan, you, there is an obligation to do it and to follow up on it. Otherwise, why go through the exercise? The, the cheap part of this whole thing is this plan right here. The expensive part is the implementation of it. And it wasn't too long ago, we were going away from sidewalks because sidewalks, you know, granted, this is more trails probably oriented, I'm hoping. But sidewalks are, you require curving gutter. Water runoff is more, you know, prevalent with curving gutter. Rather than allowing more of that runoff to hit turf and materials, so the consultant. But anyway, I don't honestly see this as being a real positive thing as far as, well, environmentally for one thing. Number two, budget wise, you are going to have, at this point in place, partnership with the school district and Central Care. So, comes to the first section of this trailer, we have to do our apartment. Is Central Care partnering with us to, to pay for these trails? Is the school district?
Central Care does have their grant that they give every year that we applied for. We haven't gotten, well, Mike, I don't know, one that we were gonna do up Metalard Road Drive, yep.
Right.
You know, I would assume that by having this trail plan, we'll gain additional points in the grant, I would hope.
You would hope, you would think so, yeah.
Look, I, I get what you're saying, but I think that it's also, having the plan, the, it gives guidance to the Parks and Rec Program who have a fund for trails. Gives them some guidance, I think.
Right. Does take a little bit of maybe influence or control out of our hands. So, just saying. So, voteless. I'm done.
There's no, there's no timeframe as far as implementing this, so. You know? And you could do it in, in stages probably as well, so. As far as the, having a high cost to implement this plan can be broken out over several years, which will allow Central Care to help pay for it, you know, the county and the city and the school.
School. If you have a high enough place, you got a starting point, maybe?
I think we, yeah. A lot of now is the other thing is, we're not that big of a community. I looked at Albany's plan, don't know if anybody else did, but, and a lot of the stuff that should be shown there was kinda, yeah. I guess, break up the network and have one trail. It's a lot of stuff that we've discussed already in Daley Court, for example. It's really easy to figure out that we need a sidewalk or trail out of Daley Court. But, you know, we all know what gun trails are, yeah. And there's no good trailhead. Anyway, carry on. I'm done.
So, we'll just do, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Billboard.
Mr. Chair, um, the city council, well, we had that terrible windstorm here last year and we, our, our billboard was destroyed by wind. We had conversations with the League of Minnesota Cities. We will receive about $15,646.50 for a billboard. We'll get about $14,000 if we do not put up a billboard. And we like, we asked the, we asked them if we put up a welcome sign. And they said that that, we would also get $15,460 some odd dollars if we put up the welcome sign. So, the city council asked the MATA board to consider a second look at a potential welcome sign versus a two-sided billboard. The EDA board recommended initially to do a two-sided billboard and to use the funds for the insurance as well as the donation from Mr. Bickers to, to do that. The council asked them to reconsider that again to look at a welcome sign. We did some research, found out what the costs are for that, which is almost identical to a two-sided billboard for a welcome sign with a digital reader board underneath. The MATA board considered that again. The MATA board thought about different options in regards to what is the benefit of a welcome sign versus the benefit of a billboard. They're two, they're doing two different things. So, the MATA board was in support of a two-sided billboard. And for the cost, and I have it outlined in here, to do that, our total out-of-pocket to do a two-sided billboard with two skins will be, um, $9,353 if we were to do that. And that would have to come out of the general fund to, to pay for that difference. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to the mayor or Josh as the, as the MATA board members to see if they have any other additions.
Yeah. If they do, I'll, I'm there for it, so. Any discussion?
What are the costs of skins? I know they are 1450 here, but that's part of construction.
They're usually, uh, no, no, no. I think, did he give us a discount of 1,200 bucks? Is that what he said in this memo? I forget. I think it's 1,200 bucks. I think it's usually 1,500 dollars.
So, two ones, if installed at the same time as construction, 1450 versus 2,200?
Yes.
So, I guess my point is, you probably count on two skins every year.
Well, what we would like to do is, we'd like to, the MATA board, we've talked about staggering them, where the city pays for one and then the school would do a fundraiser one, not fundraiser one, but a school related, like Greta, you know, jumping over the, the vaults or something, like a community one. Sterns Electric is also interested in maybe using it one year, putting up a energy rebate or maybe the utility, Melrose Utility wants to do something on one of the sides of the sign for, you know, energy rebate program. Come to Melrose, we got energy rebates. And Sterns Electric has also said that they'd be willing to allow us to extend the lease again if we were to put up a billboard. They would not be in favor of a, a large, a welcome sign or a large digital reader board, the big, the big giant one.
Not with a welcome sign?
No. It doesn't meet the intent of what they-
Welcome sign?
Yeah. No, they didn't wanna do that.
If you, if you put up a billboard like that, do you think down the road you could put up a, a small reader board?
Oh, you sure could.
You know?
Yeah.
Would they be ejected?
I think we would probably wanna find a different location for that. I, I put a map in here of a bunch of different options. I think there would be, but if, according to the billboard people that I spoke to as well as the, the welcome sign people that we spoke to, your, the sign would have to be massive to be in that one location where the billboard is today. But if you were to put it over, say, by Spade or by the Jennio Plant, someplace over there where people are driving about 30 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour, that would be a good place to put those places, so. And we asked the MATA board if they wanted to do a private project to do a welcome sign. I think there's some validity there, but the board just didn't take action at that time, so.
We have a billboard on the west end.
The, yes, we do. Yep.
Do we need two billboards?
Think of it this way. We could still have our one billboard on the sign that's on the east side of town, then you can use that other one for the school. You could use it for Sterns or whoever we get to, you know, our July celebration. At least, we are guaranteed two billboards.
Well, I spoke with a couple people. One former MATA member, and they said, why would you want to put a billboard up nowadays? There's, you know, they're expensive, expensive to maintain, big damage in storms. You have to come up with something to put on them all the time. Not that, you know, 'cause you can't just change it. It's 2,200 bucks to change it. You know, two, two billboards, okay, so now we have one on the west end.
Well, I have three billboards on it, all right.
Yeah.
Like you said, we have two for us, the city, and one for-
And when people drive by Melrose, what do they talk about? Water towers and church steeples, so. You know, we're known for the water towers especially. See them forever. I don't know that putting a billboard up that we have to maintain possibly two, three times a year is cost effective.
Gymnastics ones stood up two years, the basketball, one was two years, and they had, you know, fading on them. They still actually have them at school.
Wow. That's pretty good.
It's an interesting point, though, to say, go up and down the freeway, Sock Center, Osakis, Albany, St. Joe, Avon. I don't think any of them do.
Albany does.
Albany might have one.
Osakis does, Sock Center does.
I don't know.
They'll say, there's billboards up there.
For cities, yep. Never, never will.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I mean.
Well, and that's one of the things, the problem is, is you look at them so often for, oh, sprout, what do we do? Well, one of the comments that the MATA board made was, a billboard, you change it annually or bi-annual, whatever that would be, and then it does get, catch your eye, but after a while, okay, they get stagnant. That's true. That was a comment that came from the board, so.
Or we can just take the 14,000?
You could.
For now.
I'd rather see it get done.
So, it would cost you that much for the skins of it, the, the worth you're saving, right?
It's about $1,500 annually, that's $1,500 skin, but we're getting a discount this time. Instead of $3,000, we're getting it for 22.
So, if you get several different skins, can you switch them off and, and people look at it a little more often? You're saying they don't get that after a while?
Yeah, and we do get to keep the skins after.
So, we got that big one of Craig right now of Chief Mouse flexing, so.
Got a big mustache on it. And that was one thing that, you know, Urban liked that idea, something that will, you know, that was the only reason why he said he would go with it, with, with a billboard. So, is there any other discussion?
So, you get one of three options. One is the billboard, one is the welcome sign, the third option is take the money. So, you would just need a motion, one of those three.
I would still make the motion for a two-sided billboard.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Further discussion?
I, I just wanna, maybe, you know, just mention that, you know, you talk about billboards, and I don't know for what reason it is, but when I drive Highway 10 by the town of Perrin, there's something about the billboard along that highway that catches my attention. I don't know if it's because of the advertising on the billboards. I don't know if it's even a city billboard, but for some reason, they catch my attention. Highway 10, Perrin, Minnesota. Look at the billboards. I don't know if they're kinda welcoming or what it is, but are they closer to the road? I don't know. Maybe that did. I don't know.
Is it because you can't see beyond the road because of some of the trees? No, I'm serious. I mean, it's, there's nothing else to look at up there other than, you know, it's, Highway 10 is lined with trees all the way up there.
Tell that to the city administrator next time you see him.
Lots of trees.
I saw him yesterday.
I don't know. I, I think, I don't know. Whether it's the city board, billboard or not, I don't know. It might be the advertising. It's welcoming. For some reason, they're advertising, I don't know, this barrel fund is here or something like that, you know, it catches your eye. City of Melrose, I don't know, maybe. Maybe we gotta get something out there that catches your eye a little better, but I don't know.
Do you ever think it's mugshot up there?
No.
With a mustache.
There's a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Nay.
Motion carried.
Okay, we will, hopefully, this will be up in the next 60 days.
Meeting schedule. Local Board of Appeals next month.
A question for the council. We have this tentatively scheduled for 4:30. We're anticipating the meeting to be a little longer than normal tomorrow on the 19th, so is this still a good time for you? Would you like to bump it up to four? Is that possible? What are, what are you thinking?
You can't change that one.
Oh, that, you can't?
Only set that one. Well, I'm trying to go down and get that one set.
Can you make 4:30? You just need one, council.
Antony, can you get recertified? You've got two years left.
How long are you certified?
Three more years.
Do I need to be?
You're certified through January.
Uh, no, I still have another year.
You're not gonna do any good.
Yeah, you know. I probably won't be, 4:30 is gonna be kind of concerning, so.
You're the only, you're, it's you and Justin?
Justin's pretty good with the boss, so.
It takes 15 minutes to take that.
All right, so then we should be good then, right?
Okay, so 4:30?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So, we do need form, though, to make that work. Over here.
Yeah.
I ain't gonna be here, anybody have to-
Should, should be.
All right, so make a motion on that.
No, that was just for information.
And so, then we would also start the council meeting at 5:00 PM, which is also the joint meeting with the Utility Commission, but what we would like to do is start immediately thereafter, once the audit is complete, into the regular council meeting.
Okay, well, with that-
Well, then, Mike, you better make sure that you post those public hearings then for that, we're gonna change your meeting.
Move it up to 5:30 or something like that.
Just, you guys publish that. I mean, I can repost the meeting, but make sure you get your-
Yeah.
I'm just thinking it's, it's gonna be, and we'll, we'll, yeah, it's gonna be a little longer.
So, then, consensus, we're good with that? All right. All right. Danzo Cornerstone Tiff.
Here we are.
What time? Trying to make you stay so long.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is more of an administrative process than anything. The city has additional access increment that's been generated for the Twin Pines Cornerstone Tiff. And so, therefore, we are able to advance the remaining eligible Tiff dollars to the, to Steve, to close that out early. And so, what we're looking for is we're authorizing us to develop the final payment plan and to close out the, to close out the Tiff, to ensure that he receives all the funds that he's eligible for, just in an advanced manner. So, we would be able to make a large payment this year, and then there may be one less payment next year to make that become a reality, to make sure that he's entitled to everything that he's, that he's gotten, so. We're just looking to close this out a year and a half early. Well, actually, more than that, like four years earlier, so. And it's an administrative procedure and it's allowed under state statute, and the property owner is also consented to it as well.
Okay with you, Steve?
Absolutely.
Is there any questions? Thank you for investing in our community again, Steve. Really appreciate you having you here. Can you get a motion to approve?
So.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. 400 block update.
I, I just, the same thing with the 400 block. The city did receive requests from the current owner if the city was interested in purchasing that. I have not responded to the property owner yet, but I believe their response is the same response that we gave before.
We're interested. We made an offer.
Okay, that's what I thought the, the answer would be, but I wanted to make sure that that's what we're thinking before I would have any type of response. So, if that's the consensus of the council, that's what I would do then, is continue on with the same offer that was presented before back in August, which was the, I just wanted to make sure that that's what you're thinking before I-
I think we're with that.
I just wanted to make sure that we're okay with that. Okay? Otherwise, that's all I have for you this evening.
All right. Information items, utilities, commission meeting minutes, schools and conferences, charter communications, correspondence. If nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So.
Can you get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.